Good evening. This is the sixth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City. Council is now called to order. I would like to thank our American Sign Language interpreters for joining us and to Council Services and the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications and to Councilmember Porter for working with us on the tech to enable accessibility for our residents. Before we begin our meeting, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that March is Women's History Month. There has never been a more important time for us to lift up and appreciate the contributions that women have made to our city and our nation. On that note, I'd like to extend a special thank you to a mentor of mine, someone who left an indelible impact on our city, former Council President Mary Pat Clark. She was not only the first woman to serve in my job as Council President, but the first woman to serve in any citywide elected position in Baltimore. Mary Pat, we miss you. I'd also like to point out that today is Harriet Tubman's birthday. Harriet Tubman passed away one hundred and twelve years ago. I'm sorry, this is her day. She passed away one hundred and twelve years ago today. May we all work to honor her memory through unyielding action to deliver the Baltimore we deserve. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it stands, for which it stands.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. We will now hear our invocation. We have Reverend Lucille Griffin from Mount Zion Baptist Church.
Good evening. Let's bow heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, the creator of heaven and earth, we come this day to give thanks and honor to you, O God, because you, O God, you are sovereign in all your ways, and you own the heaven and earth, the sea, and everything that's in it, but yet and still you are sovereign. And we ask you, O God, just to be in this meeting today, O God, with the councilmen and every person that's here, O God, we pray that you would touch hearts, minds, body, and spirit today, O God. We pray, O God, that they would just seek ye first, the kingdom of God, and your righteousness, O God, so that all things would be added unto them, O God. We pray, O God, that they know that you have a plan for them, and that plan is to do them good and not to do them harm, O God. And we thank you, O God, for how you go to touch hearts in this meeting today, and we thank you for each person in this meeting, whatever they go to contribute to the meeting, O God, we pray that they seek you first before they give whatever they're going to give to this meeting today. And we just honor you and we glorify you because you are the father of all, and you are great in mercy, and we thank you today. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Griffin. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker.
Here.
McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton.
Here.
Torrance.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
Porter.
Parker.
Blanchard.
Here.
Jones.
Glover.
Ramos.
Here.
Cohen.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum with Councilmembers McCray, Schleifer, and Glover absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journal for the February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found in the meeting agenda. We'll now turn to bills being introduced.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-six, Property Taxes: Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force. For the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force, providing for the membership, staffing, compensation, and procedures of the task force, establishing the duties of the task force requiring a certain annual report, defining certain terms and generally relating to the Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force. Lead sponsor Porter. Co-sponsors Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Please add Councilmembers Bullock and Dorsey as co-sponsors as well. Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Today, we are taking an important step towards fostering a more collaborative approach, ensuring that our city's hospitals, universities, and other large tax exempt institutions continue to support the vital services that sustain our community. The Baltimore City Pilot Task Force is not just about policy, it is about people. It's about ensuring that our community benefits from the institutions that thrive in our city. Our city is home to world-renowned hospitals and universities that serve as vital anchors in Baltimore's economy and community. These institutions benefit from essential city services such as police, fire, protection, sanitation, infrastructure, just as our residents and businesses do. The goal of this task force is to explore a fair and transparent approach that ensures these institutions continue to thrive while also contributing in a way that supports a broader need for our city. By doing so, we can create a balanced system that strengthens our communities and local economy. At the heart of this effort is community representation. The task force includes Baltimore City residents, union representatives, and elected officials, ensuring that diverse voices from across all neighborhoods have a seat at the table and play a vital role in shaping these discussions. Next, transparency is a key point in this effort. This task force will provide public updates on pilot agreements, helping residents better understand how tax-exempt employees, how tax-exempt institutions contribute to our city. By sharing clear and accessible reports and engaging the community in conversations about these agreements, we aim to strengthen collaboration and trust between government, institutions, and the people that we serve. This is about ensuring shared responsibility. Our city's institutions play a vital role in Baltimore's growth, and their contributions help sustain the public services that makes our community strong and vibrant. Lastly, by fostering transparency and accessibility, we hope to build a shared understanding and encourage institutions to contribute, to continue contributing meaningfully to Baltimore's future. And, Mr. President, just a point of privilege, I want to recognize the With Us For Us Coalition here tonight to support the introduction of this bill. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Porter. This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-seven, Zoning: Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District Variances, Seventeen Twenty-Seven McCullough Street. For the purpose of permitting certain to subject conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as Seventeen Twenty-Seven McCullough Street, Block Zero-Three-Four-One, Lot Zero-Two-Zero, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, granting a variance regarding off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-eight, Naming the Playground Located at the Senator Troy Braley-Easterwood Park to be the Margaret L. Powell Playground. For the purpose of naming the playground located at Senator Troy Braley-Easterwood Park to be the Margaret L. Powell Playground, lead sponsor Torrance. Co-sponsors Parker, Middleton, Bullock, Porter, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Oh, my apologies. Councilman Torrance, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to honor a woman who has impacted a community by virtually being the mother, the grandmother, the aunt, and the auntie, who's always there for our young people. Ms. Powell just last year created, in an empty classroom in Matthew A. Henson Elementary School, a lasting memorial for Black history in West Baltimore. Our young people still enjoy it today. She passed in December suddenly, and it shook our community because we knew one thing, that that kind-hearted woman would be there to support us no matter what the issue was, but also to be there to share a Pepsi, some butter pecan ice cream, or even just give out a hug when a person needs it or a child needs it. But in addition to that, she helped us with designing a playground that is a part of two-point-five million dollars of improvements to Troy Braley Park, which is Easterwood Park. The community will now enjoy not only the brand-new playground that used to have a sinkhole in it, but now has a vibrant playground there that allows our young people of all ages to actually participate in it, including ADA accessibility. We will now have senior walking paths, exercise equipment for our seniors. In addition to that, we're upgrading fields as well as basketball courts to make sure that this is a vibrant community space, but also an amenity that esteems the community. Just to give you an idea of the council, we had this debate in terms of what happened in terms of our skate park. To be frank, our community asked one question. Before we build an amenity for others, why don't we fix what we have here? Our young people shouldn't have to play where there is actually a sinkhole in the playground. We have fixed that. We're now upgrading the gates. We're also upgrading the lighting. We're also updating the basketball courts. All these amenities because we have two things that happen every year. We have young men and fathers who play every year on Father's Day and haven't had courts that esteem them. We have young men and women who play in athletic league and flag football every summer, but don't have an athletic field that esteems them. We have a community where seniors want to feel safe and walk around on a surface that allows them to actually not fear of being tripping or actually having access to actual exercise equipment. We're now esteeming them. We're now doing things that make West Baltimore vibrant, but also bring our neighbors back. Not too far from there is another park named after Reverend Wilbur Waters. They have a brand-new playground. We lost that playground two years ago to a fire. They now have a playground that is esteeming them, but also we're working on upgrading their fields. As we do this in West Baltimore, I want to make sure that we acknowledge that our neighbors in West Baltimore ask for amenities, and we're providing those amenities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-nine, City Streets: Closing a Sixteen-Foot Alley and a Portion of a Ten-Foot Alley. For the purpose of condemning and closing a sixteen-foot alley and a portion of a ten-foot alley bounded by Pressman Street, Brunt Street, Robert Street, and Pennsylvania Avenue, as shown on a plat numbered three-one-two-A, one-one-A, prepared by the Survey Section and filled in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move to resolutions of the City Council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-three-R, Request for State Action: Fully Fund the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to reject House Bill Five-O-Four, Senate Bill Four-Twenty-Nine, the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act as introduced, and restore funding to the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, specifically the Concentration of Poverty Grant Program, and to fund increased teacher collaborative planning time. Lead sponsor Bullock. Co-sponsors Cohen, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Jones, Glover, Ramos.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Education is the passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those prepared for today. I stand here in front of you as a council member, as the chair of our education committee, but also I stand here as a father and educator. And I know that our President Cohen has been an educator, we know Vice President Middleton's been an educator. I have a son in Baltimore City Public Schools, and we know that several of us are soon to have members in Baltimore City Public Schools, but we know Councilman Torrance, Councilmember Ramos, Councilmember Parker, all have young people in Baltimore City schools. But we're talking about an investment in our young people. We understand that we are in a tight fiscal situation as it relates to our state budget, but the reality is that we cannot balance the budget on the back of our young people. We have made tremendous gains here in Baltimore City as it relates to our young people. Those Concentration of Poverty funds are critical. The funding for our community schools is critical. If we want to see excellence for our young people, we have to invest in them today. So again, we are all standing unified, understanding that the time is now for us to invest in our young people. We don't get these years back for our young people. So again, thank you for our colleagues who have co-sponsored this resolution. We're calling upon our state partners to work with us. We know that we have a governor who is working on behalf of our people, but at the same time, we also have to make sure that we're doing right by our young people here in Baltimore City. So again, thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I look forward to having the support and continued dialogue to make sure that we're pushing the ball forward for our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And before we move the resolution, I'll just share, look, Chairman Bullock said it really well, but this is the time. And I'm speaking as a dad, kids in city schools, as a former teacher. Look, they say that when you know better, you do better. And we know that concentrated poverty impacts academic outcomes. We have enough data over years and years and years to know that concentrating poverty hurts our kids. This funding formula, the blueprint, is truly the first time, and this is what makes it a national important project. This is the first time where our state has acknowledged the impact concentrated poverty has on academic outcomes and achievement. So we cannot walk it back. I taught in schools that lacked heat and air conditioning and drinkable potable water. They were schools that cried out to be community schools. We have all seen within our districts the impact that a high-quality community school coordinator can have. We've seen the impact that excellent educators can have, and so I want to thank and appreciate Councilman Bullock for his leadership in this. I want to thank our governor. There are no easy choices when you are facing a massive budget deficit. And our legislators in Annapolis who passed the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, like Chairman said, this is the moment, and I am grateful to my colleagues on the council for their support for this resolution. And with that, we'll yield the floor back to Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules, remove for immediate adoption. Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. It's like moved resolution. The clerk will call the roll.
Parker.
Yes.
McCray. Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Glover. Ramos.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye. This motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-four-R, Informational Hearing: Vacant and Abandoned Garages. For the purpose of requiring representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development to appear before the City Council to provide insight into the issue of vacant and abandoned garages in Baltimore City, and to discuss strategies, including interim liens or foreclosures, to manage and control the issue and its impact on safety, aesthetics, and community economies. Lead sponsor Middleton. Co-sponsors Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get into that, I want to add, I do have a proud son that's a graduate of City College High School, so I just had to do that shout-out. I'm requesting this informational hearing, inviting partners from the Department of Housing to discuss how we can address this ongoing issue that has impacted certain areas of our city for years. And I think earlier in our luncheon, we all, many of us have come to me just sharing about this particular problem. For decades, privately owned, abandoned, or city-owned deteriorating garages have been a significant concern in our city, negatively affecting our neighborhoods, public safety, and property values. By confronting the challenges they present and exploring potential solutions, we hope to foster a constructive dialogue that will lead to positive outcomes for our residents and the environment. The participation of residents, stakeholders, and my colleagues in this hearing is essential as we collaborate to effectively address this issue, and thank you for adding on as co-sponsors.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Before we move on, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Richard Crumrich in recognition of his retirement. Richard's. Through his more than fifty years of service, he has worked under eight mayors and six council presidents. He has played an integral role in shaping city policy, offering insightful analysis while ensuring that the legislative process serves the best interests of Baltimoreans. His institutional knowledge, sharp intellect, and steadfast commitment to public service has left an indelible mark on our council and the entire city. Beyond his professional contributions, he has been a trusted colleague and friend to many. His good humor, sharp wit, and willingness to share his wisdom has helped guide generations of public servants who have worked alongside him. Richard, while we will certainly miss your presence in City Hall, we celebrate this milestone with you and wish you all the best in your next chapter. I'll now recognize Councilman Schleifer to add some remarks, as well as anyone else who wants to share.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Richard's been my right-hand man for, what are we going on, seven years now? Six years, seven years since I got a committee? And, you know, Richard is an encyclopedia. He can quote something from forty years ago, and I can't even remember what I was talking about four hours ago. So, you know, Richard really is a professional who knows this city really better than anybody else, and he's, he always knows what I'm thinking before I'm even thinking it. So, I come into a council meeting, and Richard likes to prepare in advance. And so, one thing that, that he's grown to realize is that I'd rather let him know what we're planning on doing five minutes before we're doing it, and so he'll ask me ten times, hey, when's that hearing going to be? And then I'll walk into the council chambers a few minutes before the meeting and say, all right, Richard, let's do the hearing in this and this date. He'll be like, I asked you ten times about that. And he'll run out of the room, he'll come right back with the, with the hearing announcements. And so, first off, Richard, I apologize for driving you crazy for all those, all those years. Yeah. And, you know, I also have never showed up to, to one of the hearings with a pen, and so I have taken countless pens from this man, and so I've brought a stack of pens to, to just pay you back. And so, you know, some of my colleagues and I, you know, we gave Richard a retiring gift. So this is not a gift, this is really just paying you back for, for all the times I took your pens and never gave them back, so. So we'll be even after I give this back to you, Richard. And so, thank you very much, and we will certainly miss you. You're welcome to come back anytime, and if you see I'm doing something wrong, it's not, you know, the committee should do something differently, just give me a call, and feel free to continue to yell at me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard is my constituent, and I'm very proud to represent him in the neighborhood. It's new to my district, so just want to say, Richard, thank you so much for your public service, and I'm very much, you know, proud to have you as my constituent and look forward to continuing to work with you on improving our neighborhood and our, and our city. Thank you so much.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just say, I got a chance to work with Richard in my first term as Chair of Housing and Urban Affairs, and he always kept us on point. But one thing I'm happy to say is that I will still see Richard. What many of you may not know is that Richard is also an avid runner. And so, and he's also one of the founders of the first runners in the Celtic Solstice, right? And so, and I'll see you out on the racecourses, encouraging me as I encourage you. You've done such great work for the city. We're just happy and blessed to have had you. Look forward to seeing you out there on the course.
Councilman Dorsey.
I want to echo these things that have been said already. I know when, I just ran the marathon last year, first time, and I was, I had like ten minutes or five minutes to get in and out of the convention center to like claim my bib and my shirt and all this stuff, and I was like trying to navigate where to find what, and of course, there was Richard just like out of nowhere, just like, you need to get there, just push these things aside and just walk right through there, don't tell anybody I told you you could go that way. And the other thing I appreciate is how frequently Richard knows something, just like, like Councilman Schleifer said, just like off the top of his head, this is like archaic. I don't know, you know, nobody else. Last, when I was talking about the Consumer Protection and Business Licensing Bill on introduction, I was like, I don't even know what a scowl is. It's something we license its use, right? And of course, at the end of the meeting, Richard goes, you know, scowl is something that dredges up muck from the bottom of rivers. And so, he knows, like, you know, not just because it's in the code, I don't know why, just because he knows things. I like seeing Richard out running, too. It's nice to see folks from City Hall out around the communities, and so it's always a pleasure, and I look forward myself to continuing to see that. Thanks, Richard, for all your service.
Vice President Middleton.
I also echo what everyone said, and also thank Richard. He helped me during my first and second term as I chaired committees. I guess some of you don't know that Richard is also a boxing enthusiast. He had a special relationship with my husband, and they had lots of conversation. Those of you that do not know, my brother-in-law was ranked number four, a heavyweight, and his biggest fight was Ken Norton. But Richard followed all of that, and I'm not sure if you boxed, did you box? Yes, he was a boxer, too, so. Okay, okay. Said he worked his corner a couple of times. Anyway, my husband was the sparring partner of his brother, so, yeah, he goes way back with, you know, those, that type of history. So again, congratulations, and may you continue to enjoy your future endeavors.
Councilmember Torrance.
This ain't work. I just want to say, Richard, thank you for being a kind person. As a new councilperson and no one ever seen us in person for the first two years in office, you were the first person who didn't think I was the intern. Walking around City Hall, you actually just said hello to me and asked me if I needed something. And I remember that moment because there's a few times when people just actually stopped and said, hey, let me take a breath and ask if I need something. And I just want to appreciate you for that, but also you are an encyclopedia. From being on the council and being in committee with you, and it's just this random thing, I'm Googling, and next thing I know, you say it before I even get to it, and I appreciate you for the attributions that you brought to this council, but also being a steady staff for us.
I'd like to now make a motion for floor privileges for Mr. Richard Crumrich. Without objection, the motion will be approved. The motion is approved. Richard, on behalf of myself and all the members of the City Council, I'd like to present you with this ceremonial resolution.
I probably walked up this way ten thousand times now. Tip O'Neill told me once about the capital. I don't care how many times you see it, you see a light that went up like this, and it gets you right here. You die before you let anybody. Thank you all. This is beyond any dream. It was just a great honor to be able to come into this place and work every day. And, you know, you walk through the city and you figure it out once through thirty-three thousand and thirty-three blocks in the city. And I'd done something for about twenty-eight thousand. I was working on this. This is, you know, just thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Richard. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Mr. President, I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will now proceed with reading short titles. We begin with bills from the Housing and Economic Development Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 one, Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. My apologies. Chair recognizes Councilman Torrance, and then we will get to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. These amendments are technical in nature. With that, Mr. President, I move, I move the amendments.
Councilman, can we, oh, just the amendments, got it. Amendments have been moved. Without objection, amendments. Do we need a second amendment?
You don't need.
Okay, got it. Amendments are moved.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now defer to the sponsor of the bill for the final.
Councilman Dorsey.
I don't know that I was gonna say anything except it's such an occasion when I'm mistaken for Councilman Torrance that I think I will say something. Look, I appreciate everybody's support on this bill. I think, as I said for the press release earlier, Baltimore is unusual in so many ways. Standard ways of governing should not be among them. Virtually every local government everywhere has a centralized place for doing the basic business of licensing businesses, and Baltimore is the extreme outlier in this. So, you know, I just, I think it's a big deal every time we make our government just work a little bit more normal in the way it is structured and operates. And with that, it's also not unusual to marry consumer protections together with this concept of business licensing. Why do we license businesses in the first place if not to ensure that they are not taking advantage of the public or imposing adverse impacts onto the communities in which they operate? These things are at their core fundamentally consumer protection concepts. And so, I'm happy to have Baltimore become another jurisdiction in Maryland like Howard County and like Montgomery County that has a local office for consumer protections and business licensing. I was very thankful to have the Director of Montgomery County's Office of Consumer Protections come on to the bill hearing and testify in support of it. I was also very thankful to receive a letter from the Consumer Protections Division of the Attorney General of Maryland's office and give testament to the importance of the partnership that they have with Howard County and with Montgomery County, and that they're looking forward to partnering with us in doing work that really isn't done, can't be done at the federal or at the state level, that where we are going to endeavor into protecting consumers, it has to happen at the local level, and that partnership makes us all the more stronger for it. So, I thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing the bill. I thank everybody for supporting this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, and thank you for your leadership on this important bill. I want to also thank Councilman Torrance for shepherding it through the committee. Look, the Seventy-Fourth City Council is standing up for consumers and fighting for Baltimoreans, and this is a great example of us standing together on behalf of our residents and fighting for better. So, thank you, and I pass it back to Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I now move the bill as favorably amended.
So, moved. All those in favor of adopting this bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for a third reading. There is. We now move to bills from the Education and Youth and Older Adults Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 two, Study and Report Absence in Baltimore City Schools.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hearing was held on March sixth. There is an amendment on the council member's desk. What it does is, one, it shifts the language from requirement to request. The amendment also changes the bill's wording to make it, again, a request rather than a requirement for city schools to provide the data and the reports, and then also adjusting the timeframe from twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It also clarifies the reporting and collaboration process, and that schools that present their report at the city council hearing specifies that within the one hundred eighty days after the hearing. So, move the amendment.
All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Committee amendments are adopted. I understand there are some floor amendments to be considered. Any members who would like to be recognized, please raise your hands at this point.
Mr. President, I know there's a second amendment, and that's from Councilman Conway. So, I yield to Councilman Conway.
Chair recognizes Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Chair Bullock for holding, I think, a very robust conversation and hearing on the bill. I've got another amendment that we discussed in committee. So, committee members should be familiar with the terms of these amendments. First, it would add MEMA, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, to the bill to make sure that we get a report or in a collaboration from that office. But then, two, it will ask for an update to the MOU between city schools and MDOT, so to make sure that we can do whatever we can to support young people going to and from school. So, I move the amendment.
Before we vote on the amendment, is there any debate or discussion on any of the four amendments? Amendment has been moved. All those in favor of adopting the floor amendments, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a third amendment on the council member's desk, and so I will yield to Councilmember Parker to talk about that amendment.
Councilmember Parker, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. President. Again, we had a great conversation at the committee. This was, these things were also covered in that conversation, as well as in some of the reports issued in advance. This adds on the front page in kind of the list of things to be explored, which is not meant to be all-inclusive, but is meant to cover some of the most important things that came out before us that we wanted to make sure were included in the report. Housing instability. City schools themselves brought this up as a primary driver of student absence and delay and chronic absenteeism. And then, the report from MEMA that was presented to us and that we discussed, discussed language barriers by students and by parents as a major barrier to communication and a driving factor of this. And finally, just simply re-numbers to number ten by the addition of these two things. So, that's why the third is included there. But that language, any other data, was part of the original bill, but it's just renumbered.
Understood. All those in favor of adopt, actually, I'm sorry, Councilman Parker, need to move the amendment.
I move the amendment, thank you.
No problem. All those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Back to Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed up. Councilman Torrance.
Can I vote, Mr. President? As a person who is avid and a lover of city schools, a former employee, I vote reluctantly. I'm just gonna be transparent because I recognize two things. City schools have spent millions of dollars on home visits where they had opportunity to gather this information. As I tried to ask the district to create a data governance across volunteers, vendors, they did not want it to make that commitment. If we're gonna effectively serve our young people and meet them at their doors, we have to effectively collect that data and make it useful for every school and every person that is impacted by this crisis. I raise the concerns because the Fund for Educational Excellence, BERC, and others have done these studies. They resulted in three major factors. Our school close process and transportation do not allow young people, based off of zip codes, to excel and succeed. We have families who are facing income inequality, where parents are unable to parent every day because they have to work two jobs to maintain the house off the top of their head. How can they parent if we do not allow them to afford that opportunity? In addition to that, we've closed schools. City schools, as admittedly said, the closure of our schools and expanding zones has ten minutes on their commute for young people every day. I think that if we're gonna make a hard choice, we're gonna study this, we have to make sure that we bring the right data to the table, provide a comprehensive report. We've done this time and time again. But I reluctantly vote yes because I know that they can do better, we can do better. But also, if we're making this investment, this investment needs to be meaningful and not sit on the shelf. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Those opposed, please say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Finally, we have bills from the Budget and Appropriations Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 seven, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on February twenty-fifth, and I'd like to move this bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes, this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming, ten million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I would like to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye, this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Ality, one million seven hundred seventy-three thousand dollars.
President recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for a third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes, this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, one hundred thousand dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I move this bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes, this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero one one, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Health Department, five hundred thousand dollars.
President recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I move this bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rules Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye, this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero one two, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Health Department, two million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Glover. I'm sorry, Councilman Schleifer.
Same difference. I'd like to move this bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye, this bill moves to third reader today. We turn now to bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 one, Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard.
Oh, sorry.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 seven, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming, two hundred seventy thousand dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Good catch, Councilmember Ramos. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming, ten million dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Ality, one million seven hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, one hundred thousand dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen. Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
Twenty-five, City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-One-One, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Health Department, five hundred thousand dollars. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-One-Two, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Health Department, two million dollars. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. Now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chair Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be held a hearing on Legislative Oversight Baltimore City Children Youth Fund on Thursday, March twenty-seventh at twelve P.M. here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Education, Housing, and Economic Development, Chairman Torrance. Thank you, Chairman Torrance. Labor and Workforce, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Labor and Workforce Committee will hold a committee orientation on Thursday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at two P.M. The orientation will be held in the council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Land Use and Transportation, Chairman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use and Transportation Committee will continue its series of DOT Operational Oversight Hearings under LO Twenty-Five-Zero-Zero-Zero-Four. At ten o'clock on April tenth will be the next in this series. That will be on the subject of lighting maintenance. The rest of that series looks like May eighth on traffic calming, quick build treatments, and community-led placemaking. On June fifth, we will hear, we will discuss the Tech Division, that is, the Transportation, Engineering, and Construction Division, and footways. And on July tenth, the Right-of-Way Division, Right-of-Way Operations, Street Cuts, and Maintenance of Traffic Standards. On April twenty-fifth, sorry, twenty-fourth, Thursday, April twenty-fourth, we have a number of place-based zoning, land use bills, site-specific bills that we are already hearing that were announced at the previous council meeting. Adding to that, at ten A.M. on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, we will also hear Council Bill Twenty-Five-Zero-Zero-Two-Two, Zoning, R-eight Zoning District, Conditional Use, Maximum Building Height Variances, eleven-twenty-one, Byrd Street, sponsored by Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Legislative Investigations, Chairman Schleifer. No announcements. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Member Porter. No announcements. Public Safety, Chair Member Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting to hear two bills on Tuesday, April twenty-second, one at noon, one at twelve oh one. The first is for Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-One-Eight, Emergency Scene, Unauthorized Persons Permitted at the request of Councilmember Ramos. And we will be hearing Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Zero-Five, Arson Offender Registry Registration Requirement at the request of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Budget and Appropriations, Chair Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's two hearings being canceled and rescheduled. They are as follows. Legislative Oversight, Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Zero-Eight, Agency Briefing, Capital Budget, Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Six, on Tuesday, March eleventh, is canceled and is now being rescheduled to Tuesday, March eighteenth, at nine A.M. And the previous hearing scheduled for Legislative Oversight, Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Zero-Nine, Agency Briefing, Department of Recreation and Parks, for Tuesday, March eighteenth, is canceled, and the new hearing date is Tuesday, April fifteenth, at nine A.M. And we are announcing two new hearings. The first one is a Legislative Oversight Hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-second, at nine A.M. on the City of Baltimore Tax Credits. And the second is a Legislative Oversight Hearing on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, at nine A.M. on a briefing of annual comprehensive financial report and single audit for the year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make regu, your regular announcements. I'd like to begin by honoring Herman Harried, Coach Harried, for his incredible achievement of being selected as the head coach of the East Squad at the McDonald's All-American Game. Coach Harried's selection to lead such an esteemed group of athletes at the Barclays Center in New York City is a testament to his brilliance, character, and the profound impact he's had on so many young lives in our community. With five hundred and thirteen wins, six state titles, and five city championships over twenty-seven years at Lake Clifton, Coach Harried's legacy speaks volumes. But it's his dedication to his players and the community that truly defines him. Keeping it in the family with his choice of assistant, fellow Dunbar graduate, Coach Darnell Dansler, Senior, further solidifies the strength and excellence of Baltimore's basketball programs. As he leads these, these elite athletes, including the Boozer Brothers and Maryland's Eric Rebe, we know Coach Harried will represent our city with the passion, knowledge, and class that has made him a legend. Congratulations, Coach. This honor belongs to all of Baltimore, and we're proud to stand behind you. Regular announcements for members. Say one more. We, in the theme of Women's History Month, we have with us another trailblazer. Please, I am thrilled to be joined here in the chamber by Chief Judge Wanda Hurd, who was the first female chief judge for Balt, the Baltimore City Circuit Court. She is also an extraordinary mentor and important woman in southwest Baltimore. Eighth district. Amen. Any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. Tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Dorsey of the Third District. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I recently noticed that yet another vehicle had crashed at the intersection of Harford Road and Chesterfield, where horrendous crashes have been happening directly in front of the entrance to my grade school since before I began as a student there more than forty years ago. I knew a crash had occurred because yet again, there was vehicle debris and parts, a whole bumper left behind. And so I contacted BPD to see if the police reports had any record of who the towing company was that should have cleaned that stuff up per their contract with the city to do that service, just to see if we might hold them accountable. I asked for the last two reports of incidents because they happened there so frequently. What I found was that one of the reports had the tow listed, and the other report did not. That was not the only inconsistency I noticed, that one listed the speed limit as twenty-five, and the other, for the exact same bit of road, listed the speed limit as thirty-five. So, if you've been up Harford Road in the last few years, and especially if you had ever been up there before twenty nineteen, you'll know that it's been given a lot of attention to create a safer environment that's more aligned with the kind of Main Street feel and outcomes that we want, more so than the highway-like experience it had been. It took a lot of advocacy, patience, and political capital to make that happen, and it's been for the better. Crashes are way down, as is the severity of those crashes that do happen. It just turns out that in the course of making all these changes, nobody thought we should also put up speed limit signs. So, when this, the other thing is, when the city adopted the Complete Streets Ordinance in twenty eighteen, it included the concept of design speed. People don't maybe know about this, but design speed means that the number and width of the lanes and the turning radius it turns and other engineering and design elements should be aligned with how you actually want drivers to drive and the speed that you want them to drive at. Big, wide-open spaces encourage people to drive much faster. Whether there were ever any speed limit signs on Harford Road or not, the old design of Harford Road would indicate by design speed that drivers should feel very comfortable driving thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty miles per hour. And they did, very frequently drive forty-five, fifty miles per hour, and it led to high crashes and high severity of crashes. But the design speed is different now, and not just in one little area, but along the entire three-point-nine miles of Third District, Harford Road, from Lake Clifton Golf Course at Urbane Avenue, all the way up to the Parkville Shopping Center at the county line. So I sent an email to VOD, and I said, hey, can we get some speed limit signs here? It seems like the speed limit should be probably about twenty-five miles per hour here, not more. They said, hey, we'll go out there and look. We'll check it out. And a couple weeks later, they said, hey, we checked it out. You're right. And they put up signs marking it twenty-five miles per hour, up and down the entire street. And as it turns out, you can change driver behavior, not just through engineering, but also just through putting up a sign that says, drive twenty-five miles per hour. The research shows it actually impacts driver behavior. And so Harford Road is even safer and even better environment for Main Street districts, for Main Street businesses now. That's my two-minute spotlight on, on positive happenings in the Third District. I hope my two minutes didn't take more than five minutes, I don't know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey, for your leadership in walkability and livability for your district, the Third District, Harford Road, and our entire city. Councilmember Torrance.
I just got a text message from a classmate before I am killed. Today marks the one-hundredth year of Carver Vocational Technical Senior High School, the first ever established colored vocational school in the city of Baltimore in the state of Maryland in nineteen twenty-five. Today was the actual day they signed the actual lease to enter into their location on Carrion Baker Street. Just to let you know, it came before Merkinthwaite, it came before Emerson Westside, but it was the first. And I just want to say that, Mr. President, as I am the third generation to graduate from Carver Vocatech, my great-great uncle graduated from Carver in Barbering. My uncles, as well as my grandfather graduated. One became a mason, one another became, my grandfather became a barber, and then my uncle became a master electrician. And then I did computer repair, but ended up going a different way. But I just want to acknowledge the history of the school because this is the third location for Carver, but the history runs deep into Baltimore, as it was one of the first schools offered to free blacks in West Baltimore before we officially founded as Carver Vocatech. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for lifting up that important history. Any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, March twenty-fourth, at five P.M. There being no further business, this concludes the sixth regular meeting of the Seventy-Fourth